Ladies and gentlemen, I believe it's time for us to go ahead and start. We'd like to welcome everyone out here and show interest in our city and the county proceedings. Today is October the 3rd, 2018, and it's pretty close to the 6 o'clock straight up. I've asked Josh, one of our scouts, to come and give us the opening prayer if he would. Come on up, Josh. Just so you know, these are last minute requests by me, so come on up to my position, Josh.
Dear Fire, please ask that we can have a good, safe time here and know what decisions to make, and thank you for all the firefighters that have been serving us, and please ask that we can have a good meeting and a good time and be safe. Can I say something else, please?
Thanks, Josh. Coy, would you come up? I'd ask Coy to come on the lead us room, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can all sit now.
Thanks, Coy. Okay, we'll move on to B, Consent Agenda. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of September 9th, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve those consent agenda?
I would motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go on to C, Petitions. We'll have a public forum. Anyone can speak on items that they that are not on the agenda. But keep your comments to three minutes or less if possible. We'll go to that point. If there's anyone that'd like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody that wants to take that opportunity, so we'll move on. To Staff Reports. Anybody from staff would like to come up and brief us on things that they're currently working on or have occurred in the past?
Two things real quick. We were starting to do a project with the local ball course, and we got the north, east side of the parking lot with the monograph, you had those poles there with the rains and all the equipment getting pulled off. There was a concern about those poles falling over, so we de-energized the well for the park and also the north side of the park, and we de-energized the lights and stuff on the other side, so just wanted them to be aware of that, because why that was happening. And then, I've been working with Alton and some other local cities here in the valley on a solar project. It fits in with the power need we need out between 2020 and 2022, when we probably lose our San Juan resource out of New Mexico. And we're just beginning to look at it, but it's a very, it's a 75 megawatt site, and I'm sure it's needing about 50 megawatts, and so there's 25 megawatts available. It's a PPA where it's willing to take power purchase agreement, where we only take energy, there's no risk on the capital side. And it's a fixed cost of 3.5 cent range.
3.5 cent?
Yeah. It's a 25-year contract, so it won't come online until 2020.
And how much did you say we'd get, Herman, anticipated?
We're looking between 3 and 4 megawatts. We're kind of looking at this as a market hedge in the future, and we can back it up with our power plant. It's only a 25% load factor, so it's not going to produce a lot of energy, but the price is right.
Yeah.
So, if that gets a little further down, we'll get more information. I just want to be sure if they have any part in that.
So, how are we coming on the nuclear power plant?
It's still moving along. The cost is still looking under 6 cents. So, we should be having another update here in the last part of the next quarter. It's so progressive. The federal government has been very supportive, and they'll be hating first two years out of it, so. But, so I'm not there to get an act of that, come online, talk to you in a couple of months.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Appreciate it very much.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to publicly thank our Public Works guys. They've been working a lot of hours and time trying to get sandbags and clean storm drains and ditches, and they worked about till 11:30 last night, so they've been putting in a lot of time. So, they've been monitoring the Dry Creek Channel. If you've looked at it, it's running pretty black and muddy, so we're trying to keep houses from getting flooded. That's our biggest concern right now. You know, if you're in a house, I just want to publicly tell people, unless you've ever been flooded before in a normal neighborhood, you probably don't have a lot to worry about, but it's the Dry Creek Channel where we're the most worried, so. I don't know if you guys have any questions, but we did have a lot of debris flow last night, but luckily the county's debris basin caught, so that saved us a lot of headaches of logs and stuff, so.
I saw that they cleaned out a lot of stuff on that Dry Creek Channel, so it's really good, but how many sandbags did the, I know we had a lot of public to help fill sandbags. How many sandbags did we do before?
We did about, what, 17,000 the first day?
We did about 18,000 Monday, and then last night we had 12,000 bags, and they were all filled.
Thirty-ish?
And I know Woodland Hills is already dead, done 30,000 on the Monday, and then, I don't know, El Cruz is close to 20,000, so whatever happened yesterday also with them, so there's been a lot of sandbags.
So, will we be able to store those till the spring?
No, they degrade pretty quickly. They only last a couple of months.
Even if they're out in the sun?
Yeah, they won't last.
We're trying to find home for what's left. I know--
Do we go store the dirt until spring?
No, we'll store the sandbags that are already made. But we, I know Utox County took about 1,000 up Spring Lake and sent another couple of hundred up to Cover Bridge, so we just appreciate the citizens coming to R.A. It was really helpful.
I've had a couple of people call and wonder where they could get some sandbags that they're concerned about their homes.
Yeah, we'll all fill.
Okay, is it okay for them to go down there and get them? All right.
The military reserve today helped pass that out.
Yeah, okay.
And I drove around the city, and there's all those places, or they're still staged.
Yeah, we sat down, and they already had it. We talked about some troubled spots, and they put pallets around the city in those troubled spots, so--
Yeah, the problem is, most of the residents have taken all those that we put out. Those pallets are gone.
Yeah, well, I know. Last night in some of the troubled areas, the pallets were still sitting there at 8 o'clock at night.
So, if we need to save, some of them are already gone, so that's--
Some of them are, but some are still virtually untouched. I drove by some of them today. I've noticed, I drove Dry Creek and walked today, and kudos to the workers who did the
Mayor and Council, as you noticed, we have some awesome citizens. So, we figured about 2,000 Monday for in and out helping with sandbags, about 1,000 yesterday, so that was really good for yesterday afternoon. I love people at work, so it was amazing to see all that. Also make you aware, we did apply, get approved to have the suspension of the 30-day period for flood insurance. Typically when you buy flood insurance, you have to wait 30 days before it takes effect. FEMA did waive that. We have to go through the county and state to get that approved, so residents are able to purchase flood insurance and not have to wait the 30 days, so they suspended that. But flood insurance does not cover debris flow, so they need to look at flood insurance, and insurance companies will cover any type of mud or debris, so just so you're aware, they're separate. Also, we tried to make notifications both the last couple days for sandbagging, and we use the Everbridge system, which people can sign up with alerts@utoccounty.gov. We also send our information in from the city, from our accounts, to add into that system, and so people can freely register for this city, every city in the county they like, so they can get information as events or things occur for each city throughout the county. So, if you live in Payson and work in Lehigh, you can get notifications for Payson, Lehigh, probably what you like to select, and as they send things out, you'll get those notifications. Also to make you aware, we're doing a CPR class on October 10th, 7 p.m. CPR class we've been doing, we've gone very well, we've had a lot of success with those. And we're also doing the coloring contest for the students, where we do the program where they color, and then we pick the best, hopefully the best pictures from each grade in elementary school, kindergarten through sixth grade, from all those schools, and then we go pick them up, bring them to the fire station, provide a lunch, do a program for them, and take them back, so they get riding in an engine and ambulance, both coming and going, so it gets a little bit of opportunity for us to do some public education and get to meet some of the kids in our community. And last, just to make you aware, is to note we were a little nervous about the flooding and things last night, and we actually fared really well. We did have an offer from our north end fire departments to bring in, some of their crews, so we stationed some of them at our station last night. They specialize more in swiftwater rescue. Thank goodness we didn't have to use them, but they're available. It was nice for them to offer and be here in case things went wrong there.
Have you looked at the forecast for the next round of storms?
So, it looks pretty good until about 3 o'clock in the morning is when we're supposed to get the next rain.
3:00 tomorrow morning, or tonight?
Yeah, so yeah, that's our next round. We went up to survey a little bit in the canyon, and we had a couple of debris flows across the roads, one just flowed above the nerves and below the grotto. The county cleaned that up, and then a small one up around above the ski lift, that area. With the runoff, a lot of runoff's coming off Dry Mountain. Most of the runoff is not coming from up the canyon. When you compare the flows, it's very minimal right now from the canyon, so it's maintaining the water very well. But right above Bigwood Bridge, up around the corner is where we're getting a new stream of runoff from about a whole area of Dry Mountain, so it's coming down north of the scout camp and coming there, so it's created a whole new river inside the mountain, so a lot of erosion there. That's where the majority of it's filling up our debris basin. We have a little bit of flow through the scout camp, and they're working on that as well. Not real heavy, but enough to create a net throughout the area.
I know with the meetings I went to with you chief, you know, we've been very lucky in that the storms had went around to the west of us and some of them went up in the Salt Lake area. Hopefully we can be as lucky as we've been in the past. We don't want to get hit right square, but thank you for your efforts.
And then different story, we had that inch and a half here, so it's a bit fortunate. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, Public, and I must report, and I just want to tell our citizens thank you. We closed a lot of roads. We've diverted a lot of traffic over the last couple of weeks. We've made a lot of noise at one of the ballpark. People have been extremely patient with the whole entire process. I see we got a bunch of firemen here, and I want to thank those guys too. They've worked tirelessly over the last several weeks to keep our community safe, so. The only thing I have is we're starting to raise money for Shop with the Cop. That will be in December, when we take kids shopping for Christmas, so if anybody wants to donate, they can drop it off here at the city office or at the police department.
So, at the Shop with the Cop, they just bring financial donations, or like--
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, we're just going to show you a couple of pictures from the last couple of events, just to let you know what's been going on in some of the, what the canyon looked like this morning, if I can get to work here. This is just some things that happened at the ball court last night, some of the activities. We brought in a bunch of Jersey barriers. These are just some of the pictures of the wars going down there. We're pretty proud of it.
A few shovel handles to the face.
Just a few shovel handles. You know, some of the issues of the machines, sandbags and sheets in the military just wasn't getting done quick enough, and so we cut out a call to the residents, and they responded, and we thought we had about 1,000 people there that actually kind of saved a day, so kudos to our employees and our citizens. As Travis said, our employees had to be there late into the night to blow these Jersey barriers for some, for flooding purposes, but it was quite an event. There's the mayor, he was there late into the night as well. There's still quite a few sandbags down there, but we're finding homes for them. This was this morning. We went up and did an assessment of Payson Canyon, as far as we can go out. This just shows some of the silt, the black silt that's coming down Payson Canyon. This is up at Bigwood Bridge. You can see that the silt went around, out of the creek and down this way. You can just see down the channel, Deep E Creek, how-- This was hard. I don't know if I can focus in on that. This was, I think it was just below the scout camp. From the burn scar came down, and it busted through into Deep E Creek. It was quite a bit of black ooze, and you could just see the black in the creek. More burn scars up here, the black. It looks like molten lava when it was cold. This was up at Camp Maple Dell. This is actually some of the city springs. It also feeds Maple Dell, but in the very back, or the back of the picture, you can see some black. That's where the flow came down. It broke down the fence and came down through our spring box, so. You can just see the black goo, yeah, whatever you can call it. This was up in Maple Dell as well. There's some wild turkey. I talked to them for a minute.
He does a good job.
He speaks your language.
Yeah, they respond to that. Just, we took some pictures up at the top with the burn. This is some of the flow that came down through the scout camp. This was the diversion structure where the water diverted over to the strawberries and stocks where the power generator is. It was completely filled up, and it had gone around the diversion structure. Strawberries got there cleaning that out. They've got some Jersey barriers to try to divert the flow. We get a lot of rain tonight. So, there's been a lot of activity. That's another picture of the debris at the diversion Just show some of the pictures. This was our spring. You can't see it very well, but we went up prior to the storm to put some silt fences up to try to keep the debris out of our springs, and these did a pretty good job. This is where we couldn't go any further. This was just a little bit below--
The grotto?
The grotto. And I didn't have the guts to drive through that. Utox County was going to go up and see if they could get that back open, but it just shows if you get a little bit of rain, when you have a fire, and it causes a lot of havoc.
Just for the record, Dave was willing to drive through that, but we didn't want to push him if he got stuck.
I told him, "They have to get out, push if we got stuck." This was over by Spring Lake, just some of High Line Canal and some of the, where some of the ooze had come down into the, it cracked a little bit, the High Line Canal there. I just took a little video of that. Some more of the flow coming down into High Line So, these are just a few pictures. This is where some of it came down by the houses in Spring Lake. Anyway, those are just a few pictures. It's a, we're prepared as we can get, and the citizens have put sandbags out, and the other communities have, so we're just hoping it doesn't come all at once with heavy rains, but even the rain last night, they kind of said it's about a half an inch within 30 minutes. That's pretty heavy rain, and that's what caused some of this to come, so.
I know that George, I watched the news before I came, and George Brinkerhoff, that is our crossing guard right here, he got mud in his house.
Yeah, he was up there at Spring Lake when we went to look at it.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm having a hard enough time reading this. Better turn the lights back on. Any other staff presentations? Okay, we'll move on to Council, starting with Councilwoman Hyatt.
I know we're all going to say the same thing. Being down there, and I came with my shovel, and this little guy, Quinn Morley, he said, "You hold the bag and I'll shovel." I was good for about an hour, and I said, "Okay, I need some rest." That little guy, he was there from beginning till end, and I finally went over and I said, "It's okay. You don't have to keep scraping for a little bit that's in the cracks." He was trying to get the stuff out of the cracks. And I just, I looked at him, and I said to him, I said, "I know you don't, and I said, 'You just returned off a mission.'" And he says, "Yes, I did," and I said, and so I asked him his name, and that's what he said, was Quinn Morley, and I said, "You know, I watched you work," and I said, "I was so impressed," and I said, "And I watched the other people," and there were quite a few people from my church that were there, "and I was just amazed at how everyone was laughing, they were happy, it wasn't a chore. I mean, they were happy to be there," and I don't know how to express that because-- I've never seen that before, so I just want to thank everybody that was there. Thank you for the fire fighters, for everybody that's been out there, helping save people's houses, everything, the forest, everything. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to echo what Teresa said. It's really amazing when you put a call out and 2,000 of your residents come out and they fill sandbags, and I was feeling, I think I filled for about two hours with Mr. Perkins up there, and my spot kept getting smaller and smaller and smaller, and I kept sliding and falling off, and this little kid was there with his family, and every time I'd get a bag, he'd get his little handful and he'd throw it in with me, and so it was really fun to see. And something that I've tried to emphasize, it's something that I've believed for a long time, and you know, it's probably good that we don't have to come together like that very often, but I've always believed that Payson is better together, and there's been a lot of incidences recently where we've been able to come together and work together, and I think we have a really neat community. It's a really great place to live, and there's really good people here. Of course, a big thanks to the fire. You've been going nonstop. Thank you to our police. Special shout out to Jerry from the Storm Drains, who's wanting to sit down with me and go over the map and look at the troubled areas, and they went out and they tagged all the storm drains, you know, they looked at them to make sure that they were clean, since we had some time to look at that, and I appreciated that, and we have some problems in storm drain. We've got, the old parts of the city don't really have much of a storm drain system, but I appreciate them going out and doing the best we can. And I'm assuming, by the way, that since the rains came down, we went back and cleaned out the storm drains today. I mean, I don't hate to work everybody together, we need to get out the, make sure that those are cleaned from last night. It's also good to see all Mr. Morale's kids here, with Salem here. See how long we stick But it's good to see them here. We had a lot of good news. I didn't make it to Brandon Baker. Were you able to go?
Yeah.
So, we have, for those of you who don't know, Brandon Baker, he's a special needs student. He lives on 600 East, and he loves to just go out and wave at everybody, and every time you go up and down the street, he's out there and just waves at you. And there's a really neat story. I'll let the news tell the story. Channel 5 did a special on it. Just some really neat people in our community doing some neat things, and good message on what Brandon's talking about, and just keeping your eyes up and smiling and noticing people can make a huge impact for good on people's life. I think the governor for calling up the National Guard, grateful that the Rain McGiddens storm wasn't quite as bad as anticipated, but we still have some time to go. Let's see. I also had the opportunity to talk to Wayne Pollan for the council. He's the Bureau of Recreation. We had some really good productive talks. So, I'm really excited. Anyway, thanks to everybody, and thanks to our community. It was your amazing work.
Don't generally comment. Well, I guess I have in the past, but anyhow, I'd really like to chime in and thank everyone. I know the feeling that you get of pride when you see your community respond to problems that are almost insurmountable at times, it seems, but we were able to send, as a city, notices. We've sent notices to the LDS Church and the state system. We have an interfaith council. We send messages through that system. Just, I can't tell you how proud I am of our citizens and of our employees. We almost did the impossible. You know, it's something that, and I will say the impossible, it's great to have the resources, not only in material things, but in the people that make those materials worthwhile. So, thank you so very much for making us proud of you. We, in many ways, not discounting what the other cities have done for themselves, but in many ways, we helped them avoid some of the pitfalls that might have come their way, so kudos to those that came and helped in that process. Thank you.
And I'll echo the same thing. It was real heartwarming to see all the citizens out there and working as hard as they did. Those sandbags went to a lot of different places, and I'm sure that they helped, and it was great to see that happen. It was hard. I worked up a sweat. Maybe I just don't work that hard. I don't know, but anyway, it was great. And being out there last night when Channel 5 was with Brandon, he is such a character, and it was real heartwarming. His mother works at the bus shop, and she had about three buses go by, and he could see him coming, and he was screaming and yelling, and it was fun. And he's a light to the city, and all you have to do is drive up there, and he'll wave at you, and make sure you wave back. And I think that's, we've got a lot of wonderful people in this city, and it's nice that we can spotlight them. One thing that Brian and I talked about, we think we ought to have a big party for all those volunteers, for everybody to come and honor you, so thank you.
Stay tuned. That's going to happen.
So, yeah, I echo everything everybody else has said about all our volunteers, and when I first went down and saw those piles of sand, I thought, "Those will never get, never get gone," but then a few hours, they were gone, and I think, as the saying, "Many hands make light work." If you didn't have many hands, that pile of dirt would still be there, so thank everybody, and especially our firefighters, the police, and the Public Works. Going along with doing this, something for our volunteers, I've been saying that for about a year now, and this just puts more emphasis on it, but we have a lot more volunteers than just what happened, which is great in the last couple of days, but we have people that work for the, doing the salmon supper, and our firefighters, Young and Day, Scotty's Festival, Tour of Utah, PCT, the Band in the Park, the Payson Corral, so we just have lots and lots of groups in Payson, and I'd like to just see a, just a great celebration. Just a great celebration of our volunteers. And in fact, I'll donate... Dave, I'll donate a hundred dollars to start buying the hot dogs, so. Anyway, I think it's just something we need to do. And I think we ought to do it every year in Payson and just have a celebration, our own celebration for what everybody does. And then the last thing is Chris Phelps at Own Stadium Cinemas. She just finished putting in eight of the theaters, new rockers and recliners. And but for tonight and tomorrow night, she has two of the theaters that she's giving to the firefighters from Santaquin up to the Spanish Fork. And she's inviting them down there. She's gonna give them free movies and free popcorn and drinks. So just if you can give a shout-out to Chris at some time, so. Anyway, just thank you, everybody, from the bottom of my heart.
Okay, thank you very much. Would like to go ahead and move on to number three. Employee years of service. I think we'll turn some time over to Chief Scott Spencer.
Mayor and Council, I have the opportunity to be here tonight to recognize Neil Lawson. He's been at our department for over fifty years. I'll never get to that. But I have a little bit of information about you that I would like to share. Says Neil has been a resident of Payson since 1950. He married Glenna Elmer and has seven children. Neil joined the fire department November 1967. There were twenty-five members at that time. And they got paid a dollar in fire. And then they got paid just before Christmas, which was always nice and handy for the Christmas time. They didn't have any protective clothing, so they ruined quite a few of the clothes on the fires. He would listen for the fire siren to go off. That was meant on the pole, the fire station later on the top of the middle school across from the park. So for years, we didn't have paid or just had to listen to the siren. You're a sound sleeper, you just didn't hear it. Neil taught at the middle school, so when the siren went off, another teacher would cover his class. And you'd have to run the two blocks down to the station. It's a good thing he's a physical fitness teacher, right? And many of us took physical fitness and drivers' ed from Neil as well. Many times, just in time to jump on the back of an engine and hold on to the bar as they sped away, which we used to write on the billboard all the time. And it was just... That was common practice, so. Which was a lot of fun. Neil was grateful for a good wife. We never complained because of missing Thanksgiving dinners or Christmas parties because of fires. As you know, we get called at many different times. And so you leave your family gatherings and go help serve the public. Neil served as fire chief in 1976 and has always joined the association... Enjoyed the association with the men and women of Payson Fire Department. They're some of the finest people around. And we really enjoy having Neil on our department. It's been nice to have the association with him and get to know him and his family. Known him all my life. And what a great individual we have and representing for our community to serve on the fire department. So we'd like to recognize him. I've gotta walk back and give applause. I'm gonna let the mayor recognize Neil and give him his award. But I'm sure Neil has lots of things to say in his plaque today.
Well, the fire department's been a big part of my life for a long... Well, most of my life. And I'm grateful to have the opportunity to serve the people of Payson. The individuals that I serve with are just great individuals that are willing to give up their time and everything to help one another, as well as the citizens of Payson. And I think they know a lot of you, touch a lot of you. And I appreciate the honor that you're giving me this evening.
Congratulations. My honor to present this to Neil, only for a long time.
Okay, moving right along. One Million Pennies for Payson Library, Donna.
In keeping with the emerging theme that we have of this evening, I would like to present the Lions Club, which Rhett approached me when I was children's librarian about two years ago, so that he would like to do something for the library. And I thought, "Well, that's really nice." I had no idea. I had no idea how committed the Lions Club has been to contributing to our community in this way. And they have worked so hard to earn this million pennies. And I would love for him to say some of the things that they've done. And I agree, we need to do something for our volunteers. Because I know you've listed a whole bunch, but I have at the library, the best volunteers. But I've got a fantastic library board, fantastic friends group that do so many things. And then the Lions Club has just totally blown me away with all that they've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's been a long time. I spent a lot of work. I want to thank all of the Lions Club members because it has. Everybody's put in a lot of time and effort for this. We're pretty darn proud. As I said, a million pennies, ten thousand dollars, that's a lot of work. So I'm looking forward to working with Donna in the library in the city and creating something really great down there for the teens. And Brienne is our Lions Club president. Would you like to say a word?
I would love to be put on the spot. Thank you so much. I just want to thank everybody for coming out and helping us, you know, get to this huge goal that we had. To be honest, there were some moments where I didn't know if we were quite gonna make it, but I'm really glad that we did. And, yeah, I can't wait to see how awesome the library is gonna be and be able to have a safe place for teenagers to go and really kind of amp up our Payson brand. So thank you again for all your support.
Does that mean we're not having any more hot dogs?
I hope not.
Well, I don't know.
I want to see your dancing and your dancing.
I don't know. I think people are paying me not to dance. So it might be a catch for me to do that.
In order for that to happen, you gotta dance. And then it refreshes our memories, so.
Yeah, and no, that's okay. I'm all right to stand here.
I was wondering if we could have all the Lions Club members that are here stand up too, so. Thank you for your support. Hey, could I just put one more plug in? Brienne is another good example of volunteers in Payson community. A lot of times, we think that we can't serve until we're older. And Brienne is a young buck. And she's gotten involved and she's jumped in. And there's no reason why you have to be braying, involved, before you jump in. So I appreciate Brienne and the youth that are getting involved in our community. So thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Thanks again for your support. Well, turn some time over to Councilwoman Carter for our Scout Attendance certificates.
Okay. I don't need a mic, I've got a big voice. So you'd like to have the scouts come up when I call your name and get your certificate. Then I want you to go across and shake. Council in the mayor's hand. And then I want you to do stand-up here for a minute till we get done with all of them. Okay, I've got Willem. I don't know how to say your last name.
Nata.
Nata. Good. Come on up. And here's your certificate. In my hand. And congratulations. Okay, you've got Seth Johnson. Stay right up here, okay? And Josh Laker. And Roy Wagner. Coy. Coy? We'll print you up one with... Is it C.O.Y.?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get it... We'll get one right now for you, okay?
That was my fault. I don't write very clear.
Okay, boys, now what we have you do. We'll start with Willem. William.
Willem.
Willem, I said it right first. Okay, I want you to tell everybody in a nice, strong voice what you like about scouting.
The main thing I like about scouting is that you get to learn skills, like how to finance and you can learn how to start fires and stuff. And you can use it online.
Great, thank you. I don't know about the start fires.
I'm a sleep fire that is legal.
Okay. That was the key right there. Okay. Your turn.
What I like about scouting is that you just like get to like learn, kind of like what you said, you gotta like learn stuff and just learn new things. Good.
Okay.
Yeah, learning skills and having a good time together.
Okay.
Probably just being with the scout group. I've got nothing else to do.
Did you hear that? Okay, say it louder.
I just like being with the scout group. It's a lot of fun. And I've got nothing else to do but homework.
That works. You know what? This is probably the first time that not one scout said camping. You like the campouts? You like that? Oh, okay. Well, we appreciate you guys. So I'll sign this. Thank you. And we'll get it to Coy. Okay, Coy, there you go. Okay, thank you, boys. We appreciate it.
Okay, moving right along. CTC, Mayor Youth Award, Youth Recognition Award. Kim? Oh, is this one? Rebecca? Okay, Rebecca.
So tonight, we have three Mayor Youth Recognition Awards. So we'd like to invite Sydney Knight to come forward. So we have Sydney is from Payson Junior High School. And her teachers say that she's a very good student. She's always kind to her classmates and respectful to others. She participates well in class and has insightful answers when asked questions. She's an exceptional student with a great work ethic and so much creativity. So congrats, Sydney. Next, we have Judy Salgado. All right. Wait, we can get everyone up here. All right, so next we have Judy Salgado. If she's here, she'll come up and speak. She's from Mount Eagle Junior High. And her teachers say that they appreciate having her in class. She's friendly to other students and also works very hard at school. She always works smile and treats her peers with respect. And she's very driven in her schoolwork and making friends. So congrats, Judy. And then from Payson High School, we have Kaya Haymui.
Yeah.
Sweet, and she's a junior at Payson High School and is a fantastic student and great example of hard work and dedication. She's super involved with student council, concert choir, and even the school's news broadcast... I can't talk today. News broadcasting. She's a member of the Honor Society and Pope Squad. And her teachers say she's absolutely fantastic. Congrats to Kaya.
Just a second. I'm gonna get this picture. And then come up here and shake the hand. The captain's gonna come back here. Okay, let's get this with the captain. Congratulations. Congratulations to Mayor Don Ayer. Yeah.
Congratulations. What? We'll get there.
We're stumbling, Kirk. Thank you. Okay, again, moving right along. We'll go to number seven, Chamber Business of the Month. Jake? Jake, also, if you have time, would you introduce?
Okay. I think we missed you last time when we introduced her. But I'll bring her back up.
Well, I've been introduced. I just want to make sure it's read in the record.
Thank you. You bet. So let's do a couple of quick things then before I recognize our Business of the Month for October. And want to thank the mayor and council. We had some very successful ribbon cuttings and grand openings of two of our newest businesses. We have a bakery on Main Street again. Yay! So Sugar Ridge Bakery, fantastic. Fantastic little family-owned corporation there that we're really excited to have in Payson and has fantastic cookies and orange rolls. So just plug in for them.
And soup, too, right?
And soup, yeah. Daily fresh-made soup that change every day. We're excited to have them there. That Rose Bake Shop was never the same once it was gone, right? So we're excited to have a bakery back on Main Street. We did also welcome Krabby's To Go. They are a new restaurant, fast food restaurant in Santaquin, just at the top of the hill. And you can actually get a Krabby burger. Yes, like SpongeBob, Krabby burger. Krabby Patty, thank you. They're good, right?
I bet they are, they're good.
They're really good. So fair-priced, great individual there that we're excited to have them in Santaquin, so. I will take a minute and introduce our new director, if you'd like to come up and say a few words as well. We also celebrated moving the chamber back to Payson Main Street this month as well and recognize Andra Sefalo as our new executive director. And we're very excited. We've kind of just thrown her right in the mix and she's grabbed the reins with both hands and go for it. So we're very excited to have you.
Mayor, City Council, I'm excited to be here. It's been a great experience thus far and I'm excited to work with you all in the city.
Thank you.
All right. We are very honored tonight to introduce our Business of the Month for October. Joshua Nelson is not only an active member of the Chamber of Commerce, but he's often seen giving free legal advice and services to both clients, to all clients and people in the community. He's found coaching our youth sports teams. He's on weekly outings and monthly campouts. He's probably right with the scouts most of the time on those fun campouts, so. We're recently impressed by his commitment to the Santaquin Elementary Chess Club. He helped teach the students chess before school for several months. Took great opportunity and time with those students to really teach them. And is a fantastic representative of the community that we live in, love and work in and worship. And we're very excited to recognize Anderson Nelson and Joshua Nelson as our Business of the Month.
Thank you. It's an honor to be part of our communities. My office is in Santaquin, but I make my way over here to Payson quite often. My cousin is Sarah Hubs over here. And she won't tell you that because she doesn't like to be related to lawyers. But I claim her, anyway. But it's... I just love being part of the community and getting out and getting to know all of you. It's great to see all the wonderful things happening in Santaquin and in Payson and all the things you're doing here with your scouts and all that stuff. I have a scoutmaster in my homeward and that's where I'm gonna be in ten minutes. So I'll be done with that, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
That might be Chief Bishop S. Wood.
It's scout standard.
It's a fancy scouting uniform, too, isn't it?
Okay, we'll go on to de-action items. Public carrying amendments to the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, terms of Title II with Sarah. She was thinking you did.
You have a bed, so I'm getting in for eight o'clock.
No, Claire, you can control that now. I think I'm going to lose because I said seven, so, yeah.
There we go. Okay, so it's so bad that you always have to, you know, turn your neck and try to read down the string so your print is out, because it's going to pass a lot of beer, but you have to still do this counting. Well, it changed, just a tiny bit. There's just a couple things. Okay, so this is the budget amendment where we carry over higher amounts, and then we do have some better new budget amendments. So we'll go over quickly over these carryovers. So we have the city office upgrade. We're going to be working on the front office here. We're going to upgrade that and make it more inviting and friendly customer service, have a nice sitting area out here, so we're going to carry that forward. We have $168,000. The facilities budget, they have $13,000 in their improvements. We need to carry that over because we have a new office that we had to add for our new development services engineer, and a few things like that popped up, so we figured we better carry that over. Then we have $19,000 that we're carrying over for the branding study that we had UU help us do, and I think there's still some other things with that branding that we're still going to carry on. So that's what that is. We've got, we just ordered some chairs for the front office staff, and we have to order some desks and revamp that, so that was an amount that we hadn't budgeted, but we had some excess left over, so we're carrying that over to get them some new office furniture, and they were thrilled to have a new chair. It was quite exciting to see how happy they were, maybe what a chair can do.
Can we get some decks?
Yeah, you bet. We won't even mention that.
In the spring, in the spring?
When it's done, can I listen to it?
You can listen to it now. I have it. We just haven't launched it because of the fire.
Sure. On the left, we have our burn scar.
Exactly, so there might have to be some alterations to the audio cord.
Please, it is at Payson City Insurance Company's.
Oh, boy.
Bad timing.
Yeah. Sorry, Jill.
My private skin.
I thought about taking it off just to avoid all that, but that was funny to the last. P and Z, they had leftover amounts that they need to carry forward. They're going to get software that the new development services engineer is going to need. He needs licenses for all their software that they have, so that will help cover that in any supply that he needs, computers, offices.
This is the software that they keep asking for?
They have lots of different.
No, we still are looking for that software.
We bought it already.
Yeah.
Oh, you bought it already?
We haven't implemented it all yet, but we do have it.
Okay.
But don't we have to buy licenses?
This is for like AutoCAD and ArcMap.
Oh, I just remember we talked about like all these software things that would help us out and.
Yeah, we already bought that one.
Okay. You're welcome.
It should, it should.
I have no problem with that one.
The library had quite an excess from last year. They have about $39,000, and Donna and Carl approached me and asked if there's any way we could carry that over into their carpet. So I thought that was a great idea, since I know we've talked about that, so that's on there. It wasn't budgeted, but with that excess, we figured that could cover it. The Eldridge Grant, they get, the Eldridge Grant goes to the senior citizens. Every year it's about $6,000, and we just carried that amount over. I talked to James Gilbert, and he said that that really doesn't have any restrictions on what you can spend it on. They typically prefer capital expenditures, but they can also use it for operating, and Tammy says she has ideas to be using that money, so she has projects that she's going to be using that for. But we get that, I think, in December, so we'll give another $6,000, so she'll have a good chunk of change to do some projects over there in her carpet building. The Pavilion at Memorial Park, it still isn't all the way quite finished, so that's what was left to carry over, about $7,000. And then there was some money left for the cemetery improvements. They need to do some road patching and repair some sprinkler heads. So that comes to about $278,000 general fund balance that we'll use, and then there will be more to come. And we'll go in and I'll show you what fund balance is projected to be, so you can make a strong decision on this. So we're getting into Class C funds. We have, so for some reason, they never had an overtime account before. It was always Kent Foudin that was reported there, but we moved to employees there because they do accrue overtime, so I overlooked that overtime budget, so I have to give him overtime budget for that. And he had a carryover of $120,000, so he allowed some to the overtime, and then to just the general repair. That's where he gets all his spurs still, crack still, it's in his 430, and then the 500 West C B G project, that's still a carryover, and he's working on that. In the electric impact fee, they're still working on the 8th South transition line. There was $172,000 left of that. On the capital projects, we have our master plans and all those plans that we're doing, so we're carrying over that amount, $104,000. The PI meters, they have $270,000 that they need to carry over, and we did an additional $300,000 in the new budget, so they'll have $570,000, just, you know, hit that PI meters, install some more on that. Solid waste, there is $83,000 for professional purposes. Kent is doing some studies out to the landfill. He's having someone look at the grinder. He's having that individual also look at our post-closure costs. Right now we have money set aside in the PTIF, but the way it sits for municipality, we really shouldn't have to follow or follow those rules, so he's going to look at that, and hopefully we can reduce the amount of money that we have to put in our post-closure accounts. So that's what that is.
That's $83,000 to do that?
There's that, and then there's some other projects on there. There's testing that they have to do to comply with the state.
It seems like it's pretty expensive consultation.
Yeah.
How many, they have a number of wells that they have to test because of the water quality that the state requires us to do.
Yes, right. And then $160,000, that's to replace their scraper. They haven't replaced that yet that I'm aware of. If you remember, the scraper that we had was a total mended, so this was to replace it and get anyone, and so that's a carryover for that. In electric, they are still working on the, these two projects, the 405 South and then the strawberry line, and we just keep carrying that forward. That's to pay SEC for any, for our agreement that we have with them, for anything that we own them. So we just carry that forward, so we always count that.
Do we, are we even close that we can pay them off?
What's that?
Are we close that we can just send them a check and be done?
I think we are, but the problem is getting them to agree to that number.
So I know a couple of cities actually put this in an escrow, and we talked about that, so when I know it's there, it's in an account, not just in our general fund, they're...
Well, this isn't part of the general.
Right, I know, but still, it's in the city's money and not in a separate account. So I wonder if we ought to look at that.
Okay. Waste water, there's still projects that they're working on. Because they had that big, major sewer line break, I don't know if these projects are going to get thumped and, you know, the money that they're going to need to fix that, but we're carrying these projects over, and then as we continue on throughout the year, if we need to adjust and switch projects, we'll come back with budget amendments to switch to different projects. But they've got the 700 South, First to Sixth West, the West Outfall, manhole repairs, manhole repairs on 700 East, and the Main Street manhole replacement. So that's $100,000. The golf course, they have a water line and sprinkler head replacement on hole number eight. They need to carry over from last year. The storms rain, they have a 200 North, 200 West project, and then the sweeper, the $262,000 to purchase a sweeper that they need to carry forward. The revolving loan, we have the $60,000 that we set aside towards the addition at the Wilson, and that's been completed at the beginning of the school year. They're in there using it, and from what I hear, it's a great asset for Payson City to use. And then $47,000 in the three million for the RV park that they're continuing, continuing to work on. And then the Payson Community Theater, they had excess of $6,000, and they requested to transfer that over to cover the costs for this year for Mary Poppins, so it was a little bit more expensive than former place. All right, so that's your carryovers. Here's our new year amendments, which, let's take a deep breath and see these numbers.
Leave back, just a question on the wastewater, 700 South versus 6th West, does that mean that we have wastewater system there? Isn't that the old part of town where we don't have a lot of storm drain?
Is that, is that what they call Dead Man's Hill or Old Man's?
Is that Dead Man's Hill?
Wastewater sewer.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right.
I have a question on the carryovers. Economic development.
Thanks, guys, for coming.
I think there are funds still available in our economic development, and we want to roll that over to.
We'll just include that in our budget amendment. Give me a word, you can carry that one. All right, so on to the new year budget amendments. So the pickleball courts, we had some additional costs come up, and I've got a presentation on that, so let me just switch over to that real quick. Okay, so our original budget we had was $450,000. We were going to use $300,000, so two years' worth of the park tax, and then $150,000 from the fund balance. And the estimate to do the courts was $420,000, but then we had Ron do some electrical upgrades. There's a light pole right in the middle of the sidewalk that he's going to be moving, and his upgrades were about $65,000, and then the lighting package was $82,000. So we're looking at $568,000 for the pickleball courts. And I don't know if the full $65,000 for the electric is all attributable to the pickleball courts.
Well, not all of it, but they're, well, if we weren't doing it, he wouldn't upgrade, but he's redoing some lights in the parking lot to match the other parts of the park. He's going to connect to the well again and have an upgraded transport for that, and then he's putting power under the road to the houses to the east as well.
I believe it just in order to make sure what we do is the right thing to do and not waste the money that we're expending there, and so whatever we do, we want to do the right way.
Right.
Not, not that.
So that's what that $65,000 is. I don't want you to, holy cow, is that really that much money for pickleball courts? It's more extensive than just pickleball courts. So we're, it's $118,000 for the pickleball courts, but then if we want to beautify the Memorial Park, tie everything in, we have four different items. We have the east sidewalk that needs to be replaced. We have the creek restoration, adding trees and decorative rock, saw cut the east retaining wall and install a four-inch cap and then scale and the well water line to open it to south end. So here's some pictures. Here's what the creek looks like. We're kind of beautifying that, tying it all in, making it beautiful. This is right now, I want you to probably let Carl speak. He can probably explain it better than me.
This is the east retaining wall, and as you can see, maybe you can see that on the south end where the fences are. That, that retaining wall is level with the concrete or with the sidewalk, and over here, it's level, and then the fence will come out of that, and on this side, Ron will be pulling out the cables, the sidewalk, the telephone pole that sits here. The idea is to cut that down and then pour the cap and the sidewalk even, and then the fence can sit on a nice level slope. As you can see, there's changing elevations as well in that wall as well, so it'd be difficult to do. So here you can see as well the pole in the sidewalk and the sidewalk that can be replaced and done, and then as they put this new foundation wall, rather than having this jog, if we saw cut that, then that will just be leveled the whole way, all the way down to the north end of the parking lot.
So what's the water thing, Councilman Christensen?
So the water feature, if I hit back to this one.
He keeps trying to explain it to me. I don't understand what he's trying to do.
Okay, the well pumps water into this creek just below this area at the bridge to the north, and it pumps water through the summer as needed, most of the summer, to send water out to Oldfield. And so what he's saying, rather than just pump it there, we can extend that pipe up to this area and then have a flowing ditch with water through the summer.
Just a good water feature, right?
Yeah, it'd be a good water feature, as we have to readjust some of this creek anyway for the sidewalk stairs and pickleball courts to allow the slopage. That would be a nice water feature. And, I mean, in the end, yes, I mean, do we need to do all of that? I don't know, but it would definitely clean all this up and make it aesthetically pleasing and tie the pickleball court project into the existing park.
As long as we're doing it, we might as well do it that way, and tie, like you say, tie everything in.
So Sarah, I've got a question with this. Have we allocated the salmon supper money from the last year for anything yet? Because usually we put it in Memorial Park, but we've already allocated all that?
Well, we, there's still a fund balance from there, but you'll see down below that there's $11,000 that we need to upgrade the bathrooms there, because with big events, the toilets are not built to handle that much usage, so they want to update the toilets, and then also we have issues with the electricity. This year we had a lot of our food vendors that the power just kept shutting off and they couldn't operate.
I've talked to Mark about that, and I fully support that. It just, as long as it's a park we need industrials type fixtures in there that will not let us down.
Right. Yeah, so our, we allocated $11,000, but our fund balance in salmon supper is $60,000. So if you want to use that, and we also have $14,000 in onion days, I'm trying to get that all used because we moved onion days into the general fund, so we have about $74,000, $75,000.
Yeah, I would think we ought to use some of that salmon supper money for the pickleball court instead of taking it all out, still coming out, kind of thing.
Yeah, it's ridiculous, yeah.
But I would, I'd probably rather also see the salmon supper fund balance be used for something that's more aesthetic, instead of the bathrooms, and use the general fund for the bathrooms. We can say, we're using the salmon supper money for doing these pretty things, you know?
Makes sense.
All right, so any more questions on the pickleball courts? Is it okay?
So did we just not plan on the lights? So did we just not plan on the lights when we first did that as part of the overall cost?
We planned on, um, lighting the project. So from the bids from the company, um, the bid came in with lights with the Walkway 420 plus originally 76, now 82 for the lighting project. So that put us about 25,000 over budget. We talked about doing some demolition, maybe Ron doing some of the electrical with the lights to save some money and get that really close to budget. In demolition, under the asphalt was subgrade plus concrete. And so now we pulled out...
The same units under Main Street?
Right. Maybe, maybe less. Yeah, there'll be a much bigger number, right, for Main Street. But with pulling all of that out, now there's additional fill and additional cost in making grade. So that still kept our budget about, uh, level plus the lighting project. So we were thinking we could squeeze it in, but it did end that way. And then as far as the lighting load, Ron said, hey, if we're here, rather than just putting a switch in, let's replace this transformer, get all these wires underground, service the houses on the east side, pull out all these light poles, stick it out around the boundaries and, and get that cleaned up and better. Should I teach the boiler? Or any other questions on this?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Um, so the pool boilers, as, as we just closed down, um, the pool this year, the, the boiler on the lap pool, uh, the ceramic insulation is cracking and falling apart and leaking out. So we actually got some of that sealed the day before our city party, heated the pool one more day and then it kind of crumbled, crumbled that. These boilers are about 10 years old. The life of the boilers are 10 to 12 years. We've been having them serviced roughly every other year, the past six years, to get them cleaned and serviced. So every other year, we're doing a different boiler. So with that, uh, we, we knew, hey, this is temperamental, it's not usable, what do we do? We had a consultant come out and look at those boilers and gave us a bid on those boilers to replace the, and he stopped the larger boiler for the lap pool would have gone out first in his service. It has warped, it's, it's already, some of the, um, uh, internal pipes are warped at this point. And, and he's been cleaning, you know, cleaning their, in a pool boiler, as that colder water comes in, they sweat or condensation forms and then the ash and other sediments settle in. So if you think of your radiator fins, that all gets jammed up with sediment. So that's what we're cleaning and that's what we're, you know, having them do annually. So he gave us, he gave us the bid on replacing the boilers first and we said, well, let's look at repairing the boilers. You know, what can we do to do that? And so he said, to get the ceramic kit and the internals that would be needed, here are the two, um, prices, as you can see, the larger boiler 25, the little boiler 23,000. And then, um, I asked him, you know, what would you do? And he said, I wouldn't waste $5 on either boiler at this point. They're at the end of their life. You might get two years out of them as we repair them, but if they go out, you know, we, one, we might be able to fix them, which we've done through, through the years as that has happened. Or if we have to replace them at that point, then we're looking at four to six weeks to get them as they build them plus time to install. So, um, those are the, the options that we're giving. So I, I mean, I'm, for the operation of the pool, I'm saying I'd rather have a dependable boiler that's gonna heat the pool water and be ready. So...
So in effect, if we, if we chose the, the repair, we realistically could be wasting our money.
Yeah, we're still in the if. Uh, we're also spending about half, not quite half, a third of the money for, for two years, but it's still an if any given day.
Yeah, that'd be for replacements, not fixing them. Cause you, you think of that, um, 10 years, you're $250,000 every two years, so. So one thing, uh, one thing I think we ought to be thinking about is, over the last two years, we've put a lot of repairs and, because our pool is that old now, so we gotta be thinking every year, we're probably gonna have a lot more higher maintenance costs. So we gotta be thinking of that and going forward.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on, uh, maintenance schedules for other things as well. Of course, this is the largest, one of the largest items, the pumps are too, but...
I think last year we had the, we had to redo the, uh, the concrete or whatever, so...
Yeah, we lifted the concrete around the lap pool.
So I think that's just, every year, we're gonna have something coming up now, I think.
And we, we painted the, the clay toy features the year before. And that's, you know, not typical paint, so that was a major cost as well. Thank you.
Usually it can't happen, they guys, but Carl, good job. Okay, so we're on to Christmas lights. We'd like to purchase more Christmas lights to hang downtown. Last year, there was a few trees, so we decided to light up some more. So we're asking for $5,000 for Christmas lights. Uh, the library received a grant. It's a Library Services Technology Act grant. And we just got the checks today, so that's new, we added that today. So we got the revenue and we're gonna give the budget authority. It was a, they had to spend the money and then they got reimbursed, so...
Speaking of optics.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be another one that the salmon supper helps pay for the lives downtown that ties that whole area in together.
Okay.
Just, just a thought.
Yep. Okay. The police department has a few grants that they've received grant money for. The way I do grants, if it's, um, I, I like to make sure we get the grant money first and then give them budget authority. So we're not thinking on getting this grant and then not getting this grant. Unless it's like our victim advocate or mountain lands. Those are grants that I know that we'll get. So other ones where it varies, we wait until we get the money and then we give them budget authority. So they have a few different grants, highway safety grant, traffic school. It's a DUI overtime highway safety grant. And then they have, they get reimbursed for their overtime for doing special events. So they had a rent pass event, they did, and that goes, all of these go towards their overtime. And then the cemetery recycled some metal. They want to take those proceeds and put them into their supplies. $100 for the victim advocate grant, they had a few changes. So we increased her training and show revenue, budgets both. There was a carryover for youth court at $500 and then we're projecting revenue. Our youth court is in full swing and they're doing lots of cases. Kim said they're very busy and how many cases do you do a month, do you think, or...
Well, we don't know how many, but we're keeping the kids from, um, six o'clock till nine o'clock. And if it increases, we might have to go to twice a month. And so I'm feeding them because we, well, actually, we start at 5:30 and then we start court at 5:00. And I'm feeding them till nine, so I'm feeding them dinner every night cause I can't keep them that long without feeding them. We start at 5:30 and working at once a month. But we are, um, joining La Santa Quin, and so Santa Quin is sending the kids over. So we are keeping really busy because we, we see them originally and then they come back again for, to report on their disposition. So, and I've, the schools inquire now because, and they may start using us also. So, and it's just an alternative for them, sending the kids to youth court and it's an alternative for schools, um, rather than suspending a kid and having them maybe go watch TV for three days. They can come to the disposition and it can maybe serve us.
So are you feeding the kids coming to court or those kids on...
No, these are our volunteers that are actually, yeah, no, no, no. Parents are gonna have to feed the kids coming, but I'm feeding our volunteers that are actually acting as, as judges. So I'm, I'm getting pizza and stuff, so that's, that's our only expense. But the kids coming to court are paying $20 to come. So hopefully we'll be supporting ourselves. We had to buy shirts and, so we look professional and, so there was a few startup expenses and finders and that kind of thing so that they get started.
I think that's a very good program, very worthwhile.
When you put that, beside what month is that? The second Tuesday of the month. And the kids have been amazing. I've been super impressed with the, the quality of kids that we've gotten. I got recommendations from all the schools and that's where I got the kids from. And they're super thoughtful in their dispositions.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it's still that, the people, the young people that are referred to there that have done something that they shouldn't be doing, they have to admit to what they had done and go for it. It's not a trial per se, it's, they admit it and it's a better atmosphere.
Yeah, yeah, and the parents are actually super, super grateful because once they've completed their disposition, their record is quite clean. And so one of the kids really wants to be a police officer and go into the military and he doesn't even have a juvenile court record. And so the parents were super relieved that he could come to youth court and have a disposition and not deal with the juvenile court system. So the parents have been super happy too.
And they get one shot, right?
Yeah, it's a one, it's a one-time deal. You get to come through one time. If you, if you mess up again, you know, you can come back again. So, and we explain that to the kids and parents, they know that.
Uh, so here's the salmon supper funds to upgrade the restrooms and the electricity of the park like we talked about earlier. We asked to have $11,000, but we can switch that, change that to general fund and then move salmon supper to the pickleball courts and the Christmas lights, if that's what you'd prefer. And then the public safety impact improvements. We now have full-time ambulants during the day. They're part-time, full-time people, but they need to upgrade the facility to accommodate these full-time, part-time ambulance workers. So Scott is asking to have $15,000 taken from fund balance to cover that for the impact fee, public safety impact fee. And then our well repair of the golf course, we need $80,000 to cover that. And we need that to come from the water fund balance. Any questions?
There's no bear.
And all of our fund balances are healthy. So I'll show you real quick, just so you can see. I'm worried I'm gonna get another audit finding this year. So, you can see at the top, I projected that we were gonna use 1.5 million of our fund balance. And that would put us at 20%, which I always shoot for 20%. I feel like that's a good target for your fund balance. Well, we had 300,000 more in revenue and between the 28 different general fund departments, we underspent by a million dollars, which is a great thing. It's a great problem to have. I won't complain, just don't fire me when I get an audit finding this year. So our fund balance is still too much, we're at 31%. So if my next slide, it'll show you, I don't know. All right. So you, over to the right, I tell you, I, I'm showing it, 25% more does our fund balance need to be, it needs to be at 2.6 million. So that means we can use $644,000. And this is using what I'm projecting as the fiscal year 2019 ending. So those are the different scenarios, how much you can transfer. I do not recommend 5%, I don't recommend 10%, like 15 is as low as I would go. But over to the left, you can see, we had to use $485,000, uh, in this new budget that we did in fiscal year 2019. We did it for boiler repairs here, uh, we did the fire truck payment, we did the pickleball courts out of there, lobbyist and development services software. So that's what that was, that 485,000. And then we have the carryovers and Christmas lights, pickleball and pool repair. And you can see that totals a million dollars, which would put us about the 20% range. So if we do all those as we proposed, our fund balance is projected to be 2.1 million, given that we don't spend anymore or bring in more revenue, you know? So 20%, I feel like it's a good projection. Any questions or thoughts on that? Okay, so that's, that's all I have for you. And keep in mind that we do have vaults that we're gonna have to replace sometime in the future.
Which is gonna be a good thing in the long run.
Yep. And our capital projects fund balance is about a million dollars is what we have in it. But 800 of that came from the RDA, which I know we wanted to just hang on to in case we needed it, but the RDA has a million dollars in their fund balance as well. So just...
Thank you, Sarah.
A lot of information, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Come sit down and get with me anytime if you have more questions.
You just wanted to get to eight o'clock, I know.
Are you guys done?
Well, can I just ask something? I, I mean, like our Main Street down there? Is there any way we could get together with their little group that they have down there and literally for, I mean, it's too, it's too soon for Halloween, but set it up at Christmas? You know, make it just a fun little Main Street? I don't know, do we have things set somewhere, Christmas stuff that we could bring out and just let them use down there or get together? Who's, who's over that?
There's, there's three of them, Ty and Guy, I don't know, Guy, um...
Ashley.
Ashley, Ashley Guy, so it is Guy. And then, uh, uh, chiropractor.
It's Thor. I don't, I don't know the last one.
So those are the main three.
So is there any way we could help them out so we can make that look really neat down there? I don't, I mean, I don't want them to have to come out of their pockets with everything.
Well, I know one, one thing is they have some money from the, um, the movie that just built down there and I, their plan is doing something with some of that, so.
Think it'd be a good time to join venture there.
I think it would be because, I mean, that brings people in. Like, let's go, let's go to Main Street, see how neat it is.
Yeah.
It's just an idea, guys.
Um, good idea, it's a good idea. Where the clock is, was, can we get like little replacement things that represent the holiday? Like you've got the little piece of plastic in there, whatever it is right now, right? Isn't that what we have in there? We took the clock out, a sleeve or something. Yeah, can we get like a sleeve in that like in the fall, it's got Halloween or fall type stuff and when we switch it out at Christmas time and it's got like a snowman? I mean, I don't, I mean, that's gonna cost a little bit of money, but not gonna be extreme. You have flowers in the summer or something.
Is that removable? You know how we cut it?
The clock's underneath it.
I know.
We can put another one up there. That's why we asked for the 5,000, the lights up there to make it look good.
Yeah.
Whatever we want to spend it on.
And are the lights up year-round? We just put them up right before Christmas. Cause if you get those color change LED lights, you can make them like purple and orange at Halloween and you can switch them to whatever Christmas colors you wanted.
Yeah, cause there's some little, I've been down in Texas, went through several of those towns during the summer. And like all those little shops are just lit up. I mean, just the white lights, but it, boy, it's like, I wanna come here, I wanna shop here. I don't know, that's something to look at.
Sure is. Well, as I said, talking about twinkle lights, like in the summertime, people are eating out on the street, you know? And it just makes it more of a go-to destination. I don't know how much that would cost to have something up year-round and what the, is it gonna strangle the trees or I, I don't know how that all works.
We can, we can get some cost. I mean, we, we got $1,000 last year for one movie and we put all of the lighting, I think it lit one of the trees. They're, they're pretty expensive.
Living in five trees.
But certainly work, work and work. If they've got some money, I mean, if they'd be willing to partner too, because it helps all of them. I mean, I don't know if they want to spend their money that way, but, I mean, I think, it feels a lot better to me if there's, if there's something that we're both working on and not just city to this, city to this, city to this.
But they'll take part in it, all the, all the...
Well, it's really gonna take part in it.
Oh, and on another side note, related but just different, as I should have said at the beginning, and talk to, one of the other things I talked to President Paulan about was creating a city qualification committees and working with the states. And so he's going to be meeting with the state coordination and probably gotta reach out to the interfaith and whoever, and I've just had some community members, but, but I, I think we can get some traction there in kind of going back into this volunteerism and buying into the city and...
Well, we've got the, the just serve people as well, which is closely related to the...
Yeah, so just a heads up, we'd be working on that. So if you wanna think of some ways we can, you know, maybe a state takes a block just sort of takes another, I don't know how we work it out, yeah, we gotta figure that out, but... They arrest people.
Brad, when you, where do you get the names of the people that you go and talk to about cleaning up their yards?
Where do we get the names?
Yeah, who gives you those names?
Uh, usually we just go out and, and look for them.
You look for them?
We, we get a lot of complaints. But we do get some...
I know.
Complaints.
Yeah. But you told me how hard it is to stay on top of all of it.
Yeah, I don't know the number. We, we've cleaned up several hundred this summer already.
Oh, yeah.
We got several hundred more to go.
Yeah, there's tons more to go.
And it gets tough when the, the people we're looking for live outside of Pacon or outside of Utah. It makes it really tough.
Now, this is a public hearing, we need to open it up to the public for comment on the budget amendment.
Okay, so if we can...
Do we make a motion at that point? Okay, we can do that. Open for a motion for a public hearing.
Open.
Nice. Make a motion that we open public hearing. Now the second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go through this. Step to the mic, state your name and address, speak clearly. Try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, uh, and, and help us to know whether you agree or disagree with the comments. And please don't repeat any of the information that's already been submitted. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing if anyone would like to step to the mic and be heard.
That's true. I have to take a page out of your book.
I don't want to hear about it, Jill.
You don't want to hear about your kilt? I like what you're wearing, your kilts at the Santa Fe, Don Helly, Naples. I don't see anything wrong with what you presented tonight. You prompted me when you talked about lights, multiple color lights. And if you're going to do that, then why not, and I don't think, I don't think, well, I don't know, hook it up with music?
Would be awesome.
The, the displays and, and have music up and down. Main Street, I agree with you. It makes a big, a big difference. You start making some of these other cities that have a lot more budgets and stuff, and canals moving on the streets and everything else. But I, I think it's, I think it's worth doing.
Be nice.
Thank you for your suggestion. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Please feel free to come up. Okay, not seeing anyone that's coming up, we'll go ahead and, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Everybody in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion canceled. Kind of mose and carries. I'd love to cancel there, okay. We have any council discussion?
I think at some point in time, we should have a, some more work sessions about, it's kicked around all the time, and our, our buildings are getting older, going to, uh, sort of upgrading, building a, a fire and ambulance station, or city, or covering the swimming pool, or rec center. Especially if we're putting in builds, you know, might be a good time to see, you know, if there's, if there's something out there that's of interest, and maybe there's not, that I think we ought to have, start having that discussion and, and put something together. Because residents ask all the time, if they want to do it, then we put it on the ballot and see if they want to do it. But I think we need to start having those discussions a little bit more serious. We need to kick it to the curb and say, that's not for us right now, or this is what we need to do. I mean, there's library, there's a lot of different things that, that we can look at. So there are people who ask for, I don't know if it's the vocal minority, or if it's like a lot of the city, but I think that should be a discussion that we start having.
Do you want that as work sessions, like starting at five for normal council meetings? So did fight council vote or anything?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what the rest of the council feels, so I don't want to necessarily say you have to do what I suggested. So if you have feedback on that, that would be great.
Cause each other comment.
Yeah, as far as the parks and recreation is, with the master plans that are, we're doing, we'll be doing a parks and recreation master plan. So a lot of that discussion for those type of facilities.
Will happen there as well.
Should take place there.
Okay, we don't want to double what we're, you know, we might as.
We want to come up with two separate plans.
Okay, I believe we're ready for a motion to adopt. Oh, go ahead.
Just one comment. I know there's a lot of discussion on Christmas lights. It's the budget amendment open, so if you want more than 5,000, that's this is the time to do it.
What's the feeling? It's pretty expensive.
Are we going to have to put in more electrical? Because it seems like last time we talked about it, we didn't have electric services to do more.
Tracy would like some electrical right by the tree so that you can, I mean, we'd have to get some of that stuff done, but. I'm just saying, we could get, we could get some cost and bring it back.
I, that's what I, I, yeah, I would love to.
And I'd like some more lights in the park besides two purple. Purple isn't Christmas. I don't know.
So just even shaded lights, like we do.
Like the lights shining out even. Yeah. Christmas lights, colors.
Long term, not right now. Long terms, as we're discussing. Like having like those little tree lights, like Salem has out on the pond, but like in the field, where people can like just go wander through.
Well, bring us, bring us back some costs that, and we take a look at.
Did we get money from the movie again? Didn't we get money from the movie?
Downtown got the money.
Oh, okay.
We got some for the workers that, I mean, they paid the police officers and stuff.
Oh, I didn't know, I didn't know if they did more, if we could put that towards.
That's why we want to work with the downtown, see if they've got some money and leave some money and do something good with it.
I think they should just leave them.
It'd be nice if we could like collaborate with them.
Yeah, they did say something. I just talked to, um, not Ashley, but Ty, and he did talk about doing something, so.
Okay, I guess we're all, uh, ready for a motion to adopt the budget?
I'll make a motion and we adopt the budget. I have a few items to add and change on it. But one is to roll over the economic development money from 2017, or 2018 to 2019 to change the restroom repairs and electrical upgrades in the park to the general fund and not from the Sam and Supper funds, and also to take the Christmas lights from the Sam and Supper funds and not the general fund. And to take 41,000 dollars from the Sam and Supper funds and for the upgrades in the, for the pickleball courts, mostly for the landscaping, the, for the pond, the creek and all that kind of stuff. So I think that would take 41, I think you already had 11,000 out of the 60, so that would take 40 plus 5, 45,000 out of the 60, so it's off 15,000 dollars left in that fund.
Any other discussion on adding or taking away? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that however needs to be worded.
I have a motion.
Let's add the motion, okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, it's been seconded. Uh, this calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to number two, resolution, minor modifications to Plat E and addendum to the development agreement for the Sterling Grove subdivision. Jill?
Yes, so Mayor and City Council, this is minor, as the mayor had mentioned. Anyway, since you see, since you have seen this before, this development, and this received preliminary final approval, I'm not even going into all the details, just the minor amendments. So when this approval was granted, there was a recommendation of staff that we still, that we try to accommodate the future 600 North right of way. We don't know if or when there would be a connection from 100 West to Main Street, but we still wanted to provide the opportunity that if in the future that intersection is needed to be a four-legged intersection, that we do have some property there to extend. There'd have to be some additional properties that were required in order to make that happen. But through this development, we're securing at least part of the roadway there in the event that that road is needed at some point in the future. So the size of this lot did decrease. The request of the applicant is because this could potentially be a, a corner lot in the future, but we don't know when that will be. And so he's requesting that instead of having the typical 20-foot side setback for that lot, that we reduce it down to a 10-foot setback for that home. Otherwise, it makes it pretty narrow. Have a typical-sized home, or a, a home that's typical with the other homes in that neighborhood. We still want to make sure that that's consistent. And then also, along the lines of the types of homes in that development, the other request is approval of an addendum to the development agreement to include the six lots included in Plat E of the development. And so that is the purpose of that addendum that was included in there. So we would need a motion on the minor adjustment, or the minor amendment, as far as the road and the reduced setback, and then approval of the addendum by resolution.
Okay, council discussion?
So it's 600 North what? So this is 100 West that goes into the Sterling Grove subdivision. McDonald's is located right here. There's a little red brick house that's here that's facing Main Street there is where that, that roadway would go. But all of these have already been approved. A lot of the homes have already been built, but he did acquire this additional property after those approvals. And so a great addition to that neighborhood. For those of you who've seen it, the applicant has done a fabulous job with that development, so.
Great connectivity if that.
Yes, and we just want the opportunity to be there, but it may or may not happen.
If we don't allow timing for it, it won't happen, so.
Absolutely. We have a bathroom court there.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion. I'll make a motion that we pass a resolution for the minor modification to Plat E with addendum to the development agreement for the Sterling Grove subdivision.
I'll second it.
Then, motion has been made and it's been seconded. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Jill.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Jill. Okay, number three, request to modify the exterior material requirements for Plat A of the MWKB subdivision. Daniel, I guess you're up. Can you hear?
No, she went.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Let's, let's go ahead and do that. Resolution declaration of emergency.
Mayor, council, we, of course, went through the fire issue. We had a lot of workers worked at and, and dealt with the fire for the last several weeks. I placed this on the agenda. I don't know if it will do any good for FEMA. They, the county didn't think that Payson City was affected by the fire because we didn't have evacuations, anything like that. And so I don't know if it'll work, but we thought we'd put together a resolution that said there's, there are economic disasters that could happen in Evil Loop. The golf course was closed for a couple of weeks. There were several tournaments that had to be canceled. They were dipping out of our pond. Like, so we gathered this to ask the council if they would pass it, just to, as a, you know, if for some reason we could show FEMA that we did declare a local emergency. Again, it usually has to follow the pattern, local goes to the county and the state. So it may not do us any good, but we thought we presented it passed. On Monday, because of the flooding, the county did ask us to have a proclamation. So we had the, the mayor sign a proclamation declaring this a local emergency for the flooding, which you can see has affected us. Pretty sure we will get reimbursed for the first, the cost that we've had up to this point through the county and then through the state. So we did declare that. I think I sent a copy to all of you just to show you that we did, the mayor did do that under his capacity. So what's before you is, if the council feels comfortable in, in adopting the resolution declaring a local emergency due to the Bald Mountain, the Pole Creek, the fires surrounding Payson City.
And we'd certainly hate to miss out on funds that could help us. So I, that was my justification. And they, as we talked about it, for one.
And this won't have anything to do with the fire, the firemen and the staging of Maple Dell and different places. They will get paid for that. We, we are getting some compensation for the soccer fields that we've had the firemen stage at, the dipping out of our ponds and things like that. There is a problem there. So we, we will see some to help pay for some of the cost, but, and I think the police have a contract with them as well. But we just wanted to do this as a stopgap, I guess, in case we, we need to use that.
Okay, any discussion?
I, I think it's a good thing to do just in case, because we could have that economic impact for years with, because one of our attractions is in Evil Loop, and, and so I think it's good just have it in place and push wherever we can forward, so.
You want to make that as a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I will go ahead and make the motion that we did have a resolution declaring that emergency area, emergency area around Payson and Payson because of the Bald Mountain and Pole Creek fire, the effects of the fires to Payson.
Okay, have a motion. Who have a second? Okay, we got two of them. That's good. Okay, roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're back to you, Daniel. Before we get started, I'm going to recuse myself on this next item.
And the mayor's accusing himself too.
Then I could have not having to vote. You can leave whatever you need to.
I tried to recuse myself a year earlier and jokingly, I got you. I always recuse myself for chocolate. Okay, this is a long one. Sorry, it should take about a couple hours.
So then she won't win. It's more aggressive than it's already lost, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah. Um, do you need to wait for mayor? Should I just?
Go.
No, great. So MWKB, um, this came in last summer, 2017, and already was approved. Right now, we're looking at amending. Hopefully, you all saw this and packed it, so I don't need to. It's been too much time, so if you have questions, just stop me. 324, 326 East, 300 North, the whole area is zoned, R175. And in the R175 zone, they can have the R101 overlay if they go through that process that we were going to issue last summer. Um, so R101, the twin homes right there, you can see the two lots. Um, R101, that's the infill tool. And again, when they go through, when the applicant goes through that overlay process, city council can work with the applicant to impose architectural standards along with that zone change. And that, that occurred here. So here's the final plot from last summer. The main thing is the architectural standards. And so right here, you see two different elevations. Both of these were brought before the council. Um, they're shown on the same slide. They're a little bit different, as you can see. So it wasn't meant that it would be A or B necessarily, but these were supposed to be dispositive of the kind of dwelling that would be built. Um, you can see in the statement from the applicant that brick or rock or stucco front. Well, since that time, the owners changed. And the new owner disagrees with these architectural standards and would like to see them amended. Um, we told him that we could pursue it and see how the city council and the district feels about amending those standards. So here are the prior ones. You see the, the brick, you see the stone and stucco. The new ones, um, right here. And so the one he submitted is vinyl siding with some, with some stone. That held up the building permit, to allow the building permit to continue. The plans are redlined, so that it would be stucco with stone, and staff felt like that was consistently consistent with the approved elevations from last summer. And what would be amended is to allow the vinyl siding. And so as originally submitted to the city, these elevations could be approved. The neighborhood, last, last year, there's discussion at planning commission, city council, about the neighborhood and about the standards. And the statement from the applicant was that the, the proposed standards of stucco, of stucco, stone and brick would be consistent with the neighborhood. Um, I believe the language, let's see, it says something like compatible, if that's the word, compatible surrounding neighborhood. So as we look at the map, this is where, or I'm sorry, this is where Twin Home is. Um, this is on the north side, so we have some pseudo agricultural land, an older brick home. On the west, we have, I believe that one, I don't know what kind of material that is.
It's all brick or stucco. I just drove through there.
I think that is stucco.
Couple days ago.
That one.
Couple of days ago.
And just going through the neighborhood, there's, there's a mix of homes. Some of them have vinyl. I'd say the majority are brick and stone, and some of them have some stucco. And the applicant's argument is that his proposal would be, at the very least, consistent with the kinds of homes compatible, the kinds of homes that are there. And in his belief that it could also improve the neighborhood, depending on one's view. And so that, that's his argument, that it's at least compatible, if not an improvement. And again.
You can see the sidewalk that needs to be improved.
Yeah. 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 Um, so that's, that's the neighborhood, and that's really it. So we're just looking at compatibility. This is not necessarily a public hearing, but we did notice the neighborhood as a courtesy notice. So if there are neighbors here, it'd be nice to be able to hear from them. I don't know if there are. I don't know if there are. There were one or two neighbors that spoke before. That was in the minutes that I put in the council packet. I can't tell from those comments if they would have spoken against it had it not been brick. One of the concerns from staff is that the prior applicant states that he went around door-to-door telling neighbors that it would be brick and showing the pictures of that brick. And so I'm not sure if that placated members of the neighborhood or if the members of the neighborhood didn't care either way. So with that, we wanted to make sure that members from the neighborhood had opportunity to speak if there were concerns. And in the notice, it specifically states that the current applicant is wanting to amend the standards to allow vinyl siding. I made sure that that was specifically clear rather than just stating amend the standards. So that's the presentation. The applicant is not here tonight. He, I called him just before. I thought he'd be here. He said he had a prior engagement already tonight. Wanted me to relay his statement that he believes it's at least compatible, if not an improvement.
This is 64,000. What's staff's recommendation?
Oh, what staff's recommendation here?
I know it's our question. I understand that. That's why I asked.
Obviously, we like the nicer the house, like the nicer, but we, obviously, right. But at the same time, I can understand where the applicant's coming from. He has some concern that these standards are too high for the neighborhood and that what he's proposing fits the neighborhood and believes that what he submitted should or should have met those standards for one reason or another, if that goes into the detail. And I think staff's sympathetic to that. At the same time, we would like to improve the neighborhood as much as possible as developments occur while recognizing that, you know, we're not the developer and not our...
Isn't the building directly to the east old brick?
The building directly to the east is...
It's a little right.
This one right here.
Yeah.
Now, this one faces the east, so faces, port east isn't facing the north, so it's the side. I believe the side is brick.
Right. And around the corner, there is, there are some apartments that are brick as well.
Yes, yes.
So when he, this Mr. Watson, put this together, I mean, because I realize what they do. They go ahead and put it together and then they sell it because it's already to go.
Yeah.
So when he bought that, he knew what was, it was supposed to be. So why would he think that he can come in and change it now?
This is the current owner? He knew that Mr. Watson proposed it this way, so why would...
So he approved it this way?
Because we approved it. I mean, it went through the planning and zoning and came here and we approved it. And so then why would we, why would we change it for something less?
I can't speak to his knowledge of all of the standards when he purchased it. Do you have any recollection?
I don't know.
I don't want to definitively say he knew or he may not have known. Yeah, I don't want to miss...
Regardless, that's the buyer's due diligence.
Yeah, he bought it knowing that it was already set to build it there.
If he didn't know, he didn't know.
Yeah.
That's true.
And I know I've had a chance to talk with Mr. Harris about this. I know that we had to make some modifications to the architectural details of the plan in order to become as close as we could to the approval of the city council, but we did not talk about materials. So I think through those conversations, he had siding listed on those elevations, but there could have been some, well, I thought that, I mean, you said it was okay with the architecture, so I just assumed that the material, but we did never talk about the materials. So as Daniel mentioned, there could have been some assumptions along the way that, yeah, maybe this material's acceptable, but materials were not ever discussed. That's why we're bringing it back because we feel like it is different than what was proposed. We wanted to give the applicant opportunity to speak again just in case. They thought that they were getting a certain product.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess full disclosure, he has two concerns. One of them's procedural. In his opinion, he was told that what he's proposed would work. What he was really told is that architecturally, like the gables, you know, specifically roof lines and pitches and those kind of things met. And there wasn't a discussion about the materials. And so there's some difference in opinion there. So he's concerned about the procedure, that he feels like staff gave him a green light. He's also, though, concerned about the substance. Even setting that aside, he still doesn't like the standards. So, you know, even if that conversation ever happened, he still doesn't agree with the standards.
We're already allowing, we're already thinking about allowing him to change those, the architecture, right?
No, we required him to amend. So he did submit prior elevations.
Oh, okay.
And we required those to change. And so with the prior elevations, this roof line came straight like this and we required him to add that gable so it'd be more consistent with one of the four and a little bit of wall relief or there's something. I don't recall the type of gable, but there were a couple items. And he did, to his credit, he did comply with that.
You know, and then the one thing that I would comment on is, you know, I think it would conform to the neighborhood if we did let, have him stay with the standard that we've asked for, and it would help improve that neighborhood. I think that's one of the things that we need to consider is what we do there will improve. And maybe not state status quo, but at least improvement, staying within that scope.
Right, I also think you're consistent, just because the other houses are older. You're still consistent with what's there largely. I think if you count them up, there's more brick houses there. And then secondary, you've got stucco, but I, one vinyl, maybe? If any vinyl, I don't...
Yeah, there are a couple, but I would say it's majority brick.
Well, no, too, I mean, as you drive around, you see that the newer homes or the new homes that have been built, you know, are...
Yeah, all the new homes have brick.
Yeah, have brick or they've gone, the new siding that we let them come and put in. I see like older homes where they're putting siding on and it looks great because it's an older home and it makes it look 10 times better. But to me, if you're building new, I would think we kind of need to stay with the same standards that we've had other people have to, you know, they have to stay with those standards. And I mean, and I feel bad for him, but it was kind of his responsibility to do due diligence to, you know, when he bought that from him that, okay, this is what you're required to do. And I'm sure that he looked at the, I'm sure he had all that paperwork and said, okay, this is what you have to put on there. But I'm saying, I looked and there...